Again, we are on rumble and I'm gonna harp you every day, every week and whatnot. Please join us, please watch us, please sign in, like us, all of that stuff. It's really important. We're also on YouTube. We've got restarted our YouTube channel and all that and we actually have a next channel or Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, you know, look us up and all that, you know. Hopefully by doing all these social media type things like that, that at some point in time, we get enough of a following and all that, that they will actually start paying us and that'll help us continue to do things for, for everybody here. Again, we have American 250 Commission. I think we talked about that two year, you know, next year, July 4th, next year is the 250th anniversary of the signed Declaration of Independence. Where the country's actually celebrating all year long and I think if you start watching some commercials and things like that, you'll see 250, red, white and blue 250. That's actually the commission trying to start, you know, let's celebrate our independence. And it's the key thing there and I say this all the time, you know, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for what happened 250 years ago and for what our, our founders actually went through to, to get us here. So with that, you know, Stand Up For Idaho is actually working with KID News Radio 106.3 and we do an actually historical minute every week, you know, that plays every day, every week on there. And then on Thursdays, some people, some ladies from Stand Up For Idaho go to the Jolene Thomas Hall at 5 o'clock and 5:00 PM and they talk about what happened about 250 years ago this week. And it's just, we all need to realize what did happen, you know, to get us to where we are today. And on that, you know, I'm gonna throw a plug in, Stand Up For Idaho, we actually have a, a raffle going on. We have a beautiful wood card flag back, flag back here that we're gonna raffle off. It's $20 a ticket and whatnot. We're gonna sell as many tickets as we can and next July 4th, we're gonna pull the, you will pull the winner out of it and all that. And like I say, take a look at it, it's a fantastic piece of work. So appreciate that everybody, if you're interested in those things. Okay, wanna say, okay, next week, before we get too carried away, you know, next week is gonna be an interesting, an interesting event. Representative Barbara E. Hart is going to be here and have, did you, how many people here knew that 250 legislators, 55 from each state, was actually went on an all expense paid trip to Israel? Okay? And it was called, you know, 50 states, one Israel. Barbara E. Hart was one of those, okay, that went over there. And it was described by the Israeli government as the largest ever bipartisan delegation of American state lawmakers to visit the country. It was fully funded and organized by Israeli Foreign Ministry and aimed at strengthening the ties between the United States and Israel by urging legislative support for pro-Israel policies, including what's called anti-BDS, which stands for boycott, divestment and sanction laws. Okay, that means you can't boil it down to pretty quick, you can't, if you don't agree with what Israel's doing and whatnot, you can't boycott them, you can't do this or anything like that. If you do, then you know, there's, there's anti-laws there and actually Idaho has already passed legislation making it illegal for state agencies to work with companies that boycott Israel. Okay? Now, you know, there's been a lot of criticism and I'll say this too, is, and I think, what is Israel doing messing in our politics? What are they doing dealing, you know, with our state legislators? And you can look this up and you know, some people even call it as the, you know, the event was being called the United States of Israel. The one thing that I'd like to bring out and whatnot is, the short of it is this, if you say anything bad or do anything bad about Israel or against Israel, you're gonna get slapped. You're gonna be a problem. Okay? If you own a company, whatever like this. However, I'll throw the flip side of the coin is, is you can come into this, this country and you can say anything you want, bad about the United States, you can boycott, you can do this, you can burn the flag, you can do whatever you want and nothing will happen to you. Why does Israel have such special treatment? I have a question for that, okay? And I'm gonna ask you this. Do you know how Israel, the country of Israel was started? In, on November 2nd of 1917? And you can look this up, okay? There was a declaration called the Balfour Declaration and it's B-A-L-F-O-U-R Declaration. And it is where the British government gave the Rothschilds the land that Israel occupies right now in Palestine. And you can get online and here's a copy of the document, of the Balfour document. Israel as we know it today didn't exist before 1917. Rothschild, it was deeded to Lionel Wal- Walter Rothschild, who is the leader of the British Jewish community. We missed out a lot of history. We, I know that we all say, you know, Israel and the Jews and all the Bible, the Bible, the Bible, and I understand. But I think we need to realize too, that the Israel of today is not the Israel of the Bible. And we need to pay attention to what's going on. And so I actually ask you, challenge you to come next week and let's ask Barbara about what's going on here. Okay? I'll just take one other last little thing. There's a thing called the American Israeli PAC, P-A-C, okay? And what it is, is every congressman and senator, every US congressman and senator in Washington DC has an Israeli handler with them, that's been assigned to them. And there's one congressman, Thomas Massey, you can go look him up and some things about that. He actually refused that handler and it caused quite a stir and Massey even today still causes quite a stir. So my question, my comment here is, is let's, let's, let's understand what we're dealing with here in world events. Because Idaho is Idaho, we're just nice little conservative state that we all love. Well, we are being affected by global events. And so come and ask Barbara, you know, what happened? Why was she there? What did Israel hope to gain? And actually is it in our best interest? So a challenge to do that. Okay, now going on for tonight's event, it's a little interesting thing, you'll notice a few names here. Tonight's event was planned to be that we would have, you know, a few weeks ago, we had a, the candidates for mayor, Idaho Falls City Mayor come up and talk and we had almost, we had over 200 people in this room. And I'll just say this, one of the candidates had a bigger cheering section than the other candidates. And that actually upset one of the other candidates. And actually upset some of the people in the audience that I guess weren't part of that cheering section. Anyway, as somewhat of a result, several, I think of that and all that, several of the candidates that were supposed to come tonight, so you know, had, couldn't come. Now, in all fairness, I'm gonna go through them. Stephanie Taylor Thompson actually let me know a while back that she actually had a meeting in Boise and she wasn't gonna be able to make it back in time. So she wasn't gonna be able to make it. Brandon Lee actually was here during that mayoral forum and he sent a comment to me or to us and I'll, let me read it to you real quick, if I can get my sticker. He said he wasn't gonna be able to come and we asked him why. And he stated this, "I attended the mayoral forum and just felt that that type of environment was not what a local nonpartisan event should be like. I recognize your organization didn't orchestrate the disrespect and lack of civility that was shown, but I didn't feel anything was done to stop it either. So no axe to grind on my end, I was just folk, I'm just focused on staying positive and optimistic in my campaign and the events I participate in. Thanks for the understanding." Had a few people made some comments and that, and the short of this is, is that didn't like what we do different than anybody else in the city club or that is, we will let you come up and ask your question. These people up here have no idea what you're gonna ask. And, and I look at it like this, and I ran for office a couple of times myself and my philosophy was this, I don't care what environment I'm getting into, you and I may disagree on something, but I'm gonna always stand up and listen to you. If I'm wanting your vote, then I need to listen to you, then I need to add and answer your questions. And we may end up not agreeing on things and all that, but that's okay. That's okay. But you have a right to understand where I come from and you have the right to ask me the question and I need to do that. And that's, goes with the same of all of these people. I really believe that Brandon decided that it was, he didn't like the way that forum is, is that you get to ask your question. And I just say this to all candidates in any forum, whether it comes to this one or anything like that, take your, take your entourage there, you know, take your supporters there. Because that's how people understand how things are. Mr. Skinner, he actually called me and he was very apologetic, he works. He said that he had it scheduled off and whatnot, but his, his job rescheduled him and didn't let him off. And he tried to get it done and, and, but he just couldn't make it. So he, in my mind, has a somewhat legitimate excuse for not being here. Jim Freeman just didn't wanna come. I'll just say that. Jim Francis just didn't wanna come. I haven't, I don't know why, they haven't said necessarily, you know, but maybe they think that they have it in the bag because they are the incumbents. Could be. You know, the incumbents do have the upper hand. I am sad that these people do not wanna come and address and talk to you. Now, of the ones that we had scheduled, actually we do have one, James Dominic, he did make it here and so that's, that's good. So, you know, we were actually thinking, okay, are we just gonna have the whole night for James to talk about himself? And then we found out, how many of you know that we actually are gonna have, there's another election going on for the Bonneville County Fire Commissioner, District One? How many knew that? Well, I got, well, I got, okay, I got about half a dozen people that knew that. Well, I didn't know that. And we happened to just Rod actually reached out and a couple of them and Ralph Isom and John Taylor are both running for that seat and say that, though, they both decided they would come and talk to us about that. So that's what tonight's event's gonna be about. And I apologize that we don't have all of these other folks, okay? I would say that there are a couple of them that had a, that had a decent excuse, but there are three of them that I would question. Okay? Okay, so tonight, I'm gonna be the moderator, so you're gonna have to deal with me instead of somebody else, but we're gonna invite these guys up. What I'm gonna do, it'll be, because it's a little, little different here, I'm gonna ask them all to come up, we're gonna give, give them all five minutes to tell us what they're all about. Obviously Jared is going to talk about his seat, what he's running for, and then Ralph and John will be talking about the, you know, the commissioner seat, the Bonneville, the fire district seat. See, I don't even know what it is. So anyway, let's, let's have them all come up here and whatnot and let's give them a big hand. Jared, let's come and please sit up in, in here if you would please. Okay, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna actually start on with Jared, let him, you're gonna have to tell us what you're running for, why you're running and all that good stuff. You give you five minutes. Rod is going to keep time and the yellow card means 15 seconds left, red card means time to shut up, okay? We do, once they all get done talking, we'll go through each one and once they get, giving us their why, their wonderful speech, then we're gonna turn it over to you and I encourage you to come up, please come up, ask your question here, be bold, be, you know, be courteous, don't need to be rude or anything like this, but be bold, ask them what's on your mind. And so with that, let's give them all a big hand and we're gonna get started with Jared.
Thank you. I'm Jared Dominic. I'm running for seat two in City Hall for City Council and I'm running against Jim Francis. Me and my family are both fortunate enough to call Idaho Falls home. We moved here 15 years ago. We've always enjoyed the friendly atmosphere and the small town feel that Idaho Falls has offered us that whole time that we've been here. I'm a former Marine and that taught me a lot of discipline and something I really needed when I was a teenager, when I first got in. Graduated from Oregon State University with a bachelor's in health physics and there, that's where my youngest daughter was born. She was born there and she lives here now in Idaho Falls with her husband and they have, our first two grandkids have been born here in Idaho Falls since she moved here. So that's exciting. It's hard to believe I'm a grandfather already, but seems to be going faster. While I was in Oregon, I also worked as a machinist for four years where I had a close call and smashed off one of my fingers. But that was, it all, what I learned from being a machinist was that I learned a lot about accuracy and attention to detail and, and the need to really pay attention to what you're doing and do a good job at what you're doing. Then after that, when I graduated from Oregon State, my first job was in Las Vegas, Nevada, where I supported the Nevada test site. And that's where my oldest son was born, was in Las Vegas. Thank you, sorry about that. So he was born in Las Vegas and he, he attended school at Skyline and he also works now at DWI. He has autism, so we, it's been very supportive in the community here for him. He's in his 30s now, but that's his story. And we moved here after, after I worked in Las Vegas, I moved to Savannah River for a brief period of time where I worked for a year supporting the Savannah River site. All this related to the field I'm working in now, radioactive waste management, that sort of thing. After Savannah River, I had the opportunity to go work at Lawrence Livermore National Lab where I worked for 12 years doing radioactive waste management and that, you know, same field. Then when we had, when we had the opportunity to move here, we jumped at the opportunity. That was in 2010. Both my wife and I got jobs here supporting the INL and, and we've been working here for the same organization ever since. I work in, you know, radioactive waste management still and she works in environmental field supporting that portion of the mission. Basically, once we got here, why did we decide to run? Well, it was interesting, because my wife first came up with the, she was asked if she would be interested in running and neither of us had really thought about it. But we've been here so long that we've seen all the growth and the rapid expansion that's going on and it, it was really kinda distressing to see the change in the feel of the town, a transition to, from a, from a ownership type of society where everybody owned their homes and it was family oriented and families were trying to grow to now it there, seems they're trying to turn it into more of a rental economy where younger people don't have the opportunity to get in the housing game and they don't have the opportunity to build that equity and, and you know, that's gonna be unfortunate and I think it's gonna have a lot of long-term ramifications. I'm not only, will it have long-term ramifications, we gotta sit here and watch it happen while it's taking place. And that really bothered both me and my wife. So when she said that she had expressed interest in running, I was volunteered to jump right in and said, well, I'll run too, because we both have similar thoughts, we seen the same things and it kinda distressed us and we wanted to affect change. So talking about our platform, I mean, there's really three main elements. We have smart growth that we are, we wanna implement smart growth and, and we believe that all the development should be in line with the citizens' wishes, not what City Hall is independently determining to do. And I think that we should be focusing on single-family homes, especially affordable starter homes with green spaces and yards and you know, connectivity between those neighborhoods, not just a bunch of boxed off subdivisions that aren't connected and, you know, or a bunch of high rises that aren't connected and, you know, don't have yards or anything like that. We wanna avoid overdevelopment or more overdevelopment. I mean, it's kind of gotten out of control already, but we think we can slow it down. So we wanna put the citizens first, we want common sense leadership and I got a lot of data on population growth and whatnot. So you know, if you wanna hear about that, please ask questions about population growth, Imagine IF and anything else that's on your mind.
Thank you. Let's give Jared a hand for that. Okay. Now we're gonna switch over to the fire district and I'll just, Ralph, do you wanna, I guess, tell us, tell us about the fire district and what it does and all this and why you're running and, and just let us know what's happening.
Hello, okay. I've been your fire commissioner for 20 years. The fire district is the folks that handle the money and give the direction to the fire team that, and we hire the city of Idaho Falls to drive our trucks. The city of Idaho Falls trucks, the red ones, I think maybe now the city's starting to have red, but they originally was yellow. The red ones belong to us as county residents. We gave that direction to go fight fire. We hired them to drive it, we put the fuel in it and all we did is pay them to put drivers in it. That's all we've done. And we've done that now for several years. When I first got on this as a commissioner, the contra, our money coming in was $750,000 a year. It is now, I think, 4.3 million is what we get from taxes to do this. In that interim time, we were, when I got on there, we, our taxing rate was a dollar and 27 cents per thousand dollars worth of value. Today it is 50 cents. So we've took our rate down two and a half times and we've been able to provide that service. We've built three new fire stations, we've built a big shed to house our stuff in out on West Broadway. And we were in the process of doing more, but with this commission change we had here a couple of years ago, there's a little bit of argument of where we're going. So we would have already had another station built at the south end of the golf course. We own six and a half acres there. We were on target to go build it and we were gonna put in a training center with it. That was all part of our plan, but we got a new commissioner who's decided that we gotta go through a great process of looking at things and it's been, it's been a challenge to keep things running straight down the tracks. So we had a goal, we had a direction of where we were going. I'd like to see us keep going. It will be challenging over the next period of time. I was born right out here west of Idaho Falls. Actually, I was born in Sacred Art Hospital and I've lived right out here west of Idaho Falls my whole life. My dad was a dairyman and a farmer and I started a custom farming business when I was 16 and I've never quit farming. I've been there and done my thing my whole life.
Hi, I'm John Taylor. I've only been here since 1969, so that's a while now. And I'm a mechanic by trade and I spent 10 years about, I working for the city fixing all the fire trucks and the ambulances for the city and for Bonneville County. And then I went out to the site and did that for another seven years out there, the same job. And I think I have a pretty good insight on what the vehicle and equipment needs are and I hope that that'll help me if I get this position. Ralph's been in there a long time, he knows a lot about it. But I think that term limits are good too, maybe, I don't know. So anyway, I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring. Like I said, I've been here a long time. I live out on the west side also, I live out in New Sweden. What would you guys like to know?
Oh, we'll get that. I, I have one que, maybe Ralph can answer and whatnot. What, you said the commissioner got a new commissioner, who, who is that, how, what's the, and again, just showing my ignorance of this, who, who, who's who in the zoo as far as the fire districts go?
Okay, a few years ago, AMN requested that they could join the district, Bonneville County Fire District. They had, I'm gonna call it a flimsy fire department at best, because they had to go to their city officials and ask for money to run their department on and it was, it was always a fight to have enough money to do their thing. They come to us and asked if they could maybe join us, because once they do that, that puts them on the tax roll and that way there's automatic money coming every year to work with. And we went through everything, we researched it and we said yes. So we started and they got to appoint, because of the size of it, they got to appoint two new commissioners. There was three, they got to appoint two. And so they came on board and, what's that? Yes, total of five. Derek Nelson, Dana Kirkham, and Dave's been on with me for a long time, Dave Long, myself and who else?
Okay, so you guys decide what's going on in the county, correct? And outside, so that doesn't include city of Idaho Falls or anything like that?
No. It, it is what happens in the, in the county area in terms of firefighting, what we do, what we provide and how we get it done. And because of the distance, it makes a lot of fires pretty challenging, because they're not like in town. In town, you got a lot of fire stations, it's minutes to the scene. A lot of ours are far enough out, it is challenging, but our guys have done a really good job. AMN out there just the other day, they were reporting fires in less than three minutes. So there, there's been a change there. Their fire chief that had been there for near 20 years, he decided to re-hi-retire. We went through quite a deal and we finally hired a new fire truck chief and he is doing a phenomenal job. He's probably done better than I expected he could do. He's, he's brought the team on board, there's a lot more coalescing between them and there's a lot of really good things that have happened.
So AMN and the county work together and so the county supports AMN Fire Department and all that guys now, right?
Yes. Most of the equipment is, still belongs to Bonneville County, but AMN had one fire truck, a ladder truck and they've joined us and they're a great partner in this. I think we can go a long ways. We had, we had another fire station down just east of the malt plant that we had built. The city come to us and offered us ridiculous money for it, because it was in the scope of where they wanted to go. And we had talked about it, we decided we'd sell them that station, twice the money that we had in it and move up the street. We bought a piece of property right by the south end of the golf course, we were good to go and then we had some, one of our commissioners has decided we need to go out there and throw it around in the public and waste a lot of you guys' time. We, we needed the station. We went from a four, class four station to a two, we almost made number one. We're at 88 and a half points, 88.7. And if we'd have hit 90, we would have been a number one station and that is the, there's only one in the state of Idaho, so that's good. So we've came a long ways. And it's, it was our fire people, it was our fire chief and the people he was working with. They, they have done a phenomenal job. They, they have done a phenomenal job.
Okay. Thank God. Well, we'll open it up to questions. If I could ask you to come up to this microphone here, please. And, and ask your questions and, and just line up there and, uh, stand behind the back. Well, you can get, no, you can get up here first. Just wait in line to ask your question. There you go. Okay. Go ahead, go.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for coming. It's, it's really a pleasure. Ralph, I have a que- a question. You said that it's going to be challenging. Talk about those challenges and why you feel you're the best guy to handle those. I mean, are you talking money challenges, land building? What, would you explain a little bit more of that in a little bit more detail and how you would handle that? And then John, maybe you can answer that too.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll give you two minutes to answer that if you could, please.
Well, like I said, we had a direction where we were going. We were going to build another fire station down by the south end of the golf course. The purchase, the property was purchased. We bought six and a half acres down there for little to nothing. We had a donation of a bunch of money. We were on our way. And then we got an additional two commissioners from AMN and at first they seemed to be good about it. And then they, they have decided that the best place for the fire station is further south and further east. We won't disagree with that. We would have loved to have done that, but when you're building a fire station, you can't pick and choose. People won't sell you ground. Believe it or not, it's pretty tough to buy ground. So that location was as good as we could get and that's within a couple, three miles of the southern border of Bonneville County. And it's as far east, probably, maybe we could get a little further east feasible because we was trying to get out in that area up on the foothills where there's a lot of fancy homes. And so that was kind of our focus of where we were going. The, the challenge I'm, we're going to have is getting, I don't know if you, well, you probably don't know, but the city made us an offer to take us over. They come and said, I asked a couple of our, one of our commissioners to go sit with the city so we could get a mutual aid agreement, which we've had with the city forever. They come back to us, I don't know, a period later and said, the city wanted to take us over. Uh, they wanted to ma-marry us up. And I, I've got issues with that. I don't, I probably shouldn't even say this. I don't trust this, I don't trust the city. Look what they did in Swan Valley. They went up to Swan Valley, took that over and then wouldn't provide the services and ended up leaving and they tried to take their ambulance on the way out of town. That was the city. That really bothers me and I don't want to do that again.
The challenges that I see are the exponential growth of our county and our city. AMN is a great fire department, but they don't have very many people. So if we're going to have another fire department or another fire station, we're going to have to train some more people and hire some more people. But I still think that the biggest challenge is the fact that we've got such amazing growth in the county. It's crazy. Everywhere you look, there's apartment buildings, tons of stuff out there. I, I just think that's the largest challenge.
Sure.
We, we recognize the fact that we need more people. We have one, prior to, we had one full-time, uh, person when AMN joined us. They had one full-time person and I think seven or eight part-time guys that would come and answer, maybe 15. It was a bunch. And they have real good part-time fire participation out there. They always have. And once they joined, then we started hiring more people and we were up to seven. I think we're at 17 now. We recognize we need to go further, but 17 is about all we can house. Fact is, they complained here the other day, the firemen, that the current fire station is so packed, they almost can't function. Well, if we'd had a new station, we'd have took care of that, but that wasn't my, I tried hard to not go there.
John, do you have a follow-up comment?
No, I think, I think he's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next question.
I'd like to address Jared Dominic with this Idaho Falls City Commission. Is that correct? City Council, yes. Uh, and you mentioned and proposed that, uh, with all the explosive growth that's going on in the community, that, uh, we need to consider controlling how it grows and maybe perhaps all of the rentals and, and, uh, the growth in that area, which to me, it doesn't seem like they're very full, but in any case, maybe you could explain to us where that's coming from and what's driving it and what you'd plan to do to pro- uh, propose to control it? How do you propose to control it?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. Yeah, please ask a follow-up if you have, if you have any interest. There's a, I'd like to debunk the population growth myth. Oh, since 20 to 21 to 2024, the average population growth of Idaho Falls is 1.7%. That's an average of 1,128 people per year moving into Idaho Falls. So I'm just talking city only, you know, what's going on outside the city is different, but it is not an explosive population growth in Idaho Falls. But what is really growing is the explosion of apartment buildings and that's being driven by the comprehensive plan, Imagine IF, and it's being promoted by the current city council and the current mayor. And they are implementing Imagine IF through changing the city ordinances, Title 11 specifically, which has all the planning and zoning codes. They're opening up all the residential zones for higher density buildings and they're allowing ADUs in every single, um, zone as well as what's called PUD, a planned unit development. Those are the ones that are going up in the communities that were traditionally just, uh, regular neighborhoods. Now they're building high density in all those locations through the PUD process, which kind of shortcuts some of the codes or it's an expedited permitting pathway. So why they're building so many, I don't know, but they did create it. And, uh, Jim Freeman stated at the, um, previous meeting that we just had at Compass Academy, that they're intentionally increasing population density within Idaho Falls. That's their goal. They're driving that and with that comes the increase in traffic. And it can be turned around because the city council created it and they also put all those codes in place to allow it to happen. They actually facilitate it to happen. They can all be reversed and go back to the way it was. We're not taking any rights away from anybody that they weren't prohibited from before. It's just city council's decision-making process. Um, we can,
How do you propose to control it? We do need to use the microphone because those that are watching us won't be able to hear the question unless you use the microphone. So if you could, please. Okay.
Um, I think the, the fastest way to get back in there is, well, first we got to get rid of all, rid of all the incumbents so that we have at least three new city council members. And a, a new mayor would be helpful. Um, one of the candidates is the leader of the city council right now. So if you vote for that mayoral candidate, it's just going to be more of the same. If you keep the incumbents in, it's more of the same. You're going to get more growth and it's going to keep coming faster. So, you know, we can't stop what's been built, but we can certainly curtail any future development in that area and move towards, um, you know, a neighborhood, um, community-based environment like we used to have as opposed to all these multi-unit structures.
Okay. Thank you.
Some voters seem to be concerned with nepotism on the council and Jared, how would you guarantee us that you and your wife would not vote as a block as council people? And how can you vote independently if you and your wife both get elected?
Well, we've been married for quite a while, um, so, and, and so we've learned to get along very well over those years. Otherwise we wouldn't still be there, I'm sure. Um, but we do have disagreements, of course, like anybody, and so we discuss that. And, and I think a lot of it really depends on if you agree with the philosophies that we're putting forth and the leadership that we want to give. If, uh, if you do agree with that path, then that is potentially a good thing because that's a, is a more sizable percentage of the vote with on city council. Um, if you disagree with it, then, um, then you disagree with it and, and that's okay too. We, we do have differences. We don't see eye to eye on everything and we will vote our conscience, but we will discuss everything openly between each other before we reach decisions. So it's not guaranteed. I mean, it's likely that we'll vote similarly because we have very similar views, but I could see it wouldn't happen potentially in every case.
Transparency seems to be a buzzword for all politicians nowadays. And, uh, just to ask you a question to see how transparent you might be on all three of you may answer if you'd like. But who are you supporting for to be the, uh, next, uh, mayor of Idaho Falls?
Personally, I, I voted myself already. I did early voting and that's going on right now. So I'd encourage all of you to go do that if you haven't. Um, I voted for Jeff Aldridge myself, um, because he shares a similar philosophy to what we share. Um, and I definitely don't want an incumbent. So that's who I voted for.
Did everybody, did everybody hear that?
Not, nobody, nobody online.
Oh. Ralph and I cannot vote because we're not in the city limits. We're in the county.
The first question I would have is can you follow directions? Yeah. So when you're talking, everybody, please use a microphone. Thank you everyone. I'm sorry. Okay. Excellent question.
Sort of along the lines of transparency. More has to do with, uh, public outreach. Um, our, our current city council has had some issues with, uh, discussing what they're doing with individual members of the community and how do you address that? I don't know if that, I don't know if that's the best way to phrase that question, but I think at least some of you understand.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, and I did kind of miss out on the outreach portion on answering that from the last question that was asked. Um, we believe that there is a huge void in communication as far as information getting from the citizens to city council. There's not really any good avenue to convey that information and they've historically, especially during COVID, they kind of shut that down even more, you know, clamp down. You couldn't even go to council meetings and things like that. So I mean, I think that transparency is very important. Um, I personally, and I know my wife does as well, have an open door policy. We have our number posted. You can, anybody can call anytime and we'll talk to them. We also think that, you know, there should be quarterly forums that would include the mayor, all the city council members and all the department heads, um, across the city and they should be held and it should be an open forum where every citizen or business owner or anybody that has interest should come up and, and ask a question and they should be answered directly by those individuals to get a good perspective, be able to say what's on their mind and, uh, and hear right from them, you know, what they believe. Another pathway for communication that we would like to open up would be like a, a hotline for the city that would be available either through phone or for, through email or also through different social media aspects so that any citizen could go in, they could ask any question and they could get an answer in a timely fashion and all those questions with answers would be posted. Um, the history would be live so that any citizen or anybody that wanted to look at it, it would all be public information. They could go back and look at all the old answers for all those questions and, uh, you know, see if we're saying, saying the same thing, you know, as time goes by. So I think transparency is very important and I think it should be promoted much more than it is right now.
Don't be shy.
I'm not. I'm just trying to think of a intelligent question. So Mr. Taylor, John Taylor, I live on the west side too, but, um, with, so you are county. You do the outside of the city boundaries. So are you seeing, uh, a big growth of anything that you can, I mean, you can get to us, right? I mean, your fire stations and all that. I'm trying to figure out why the city wants to take you over. What is their business in the county, wanting to take over the county? You know, like that might, yeah.
I'm not a hundred percent sure why the city would want to take over the county, but if you go out to Beaches Corner, you would find a ton of apartments out there and there's no fire station out there. Ralph's talking about a fire station east, which we need, but I think we need one out north as well. Our Bonneville County goes a long ways north and all, you, all that growth out there, I think needs to be looked at.
Let me help you. There, there is a fire station just barely south of Lincoln, uh, Bonneville High School on Lincoln Road. Uh, we built that a few years ago. We closed the other one. We would like to figure out how we could go further north, but you know, we don't want to stretch our monies too much. So, um, we, we feel like we're going, growing slowly in a good direction. We built the station out west of Idaho Falls when Ariva announced they were coming here to do that, uh, refi-refibe of all the metal rods and, um,
Ralph, just hold it like this, like this.
Okay. When they were coming to town, Ariva was going to build a plant 18 miles west of Idaho Falls. They were going to grind fuel rods, melt them down, re-machine them and put them back in reactors. They come to us and wanted to be part of our fire district. So that is why this station at Foster Road was built. They, they were going to bring $2 billion worth of, uh, infrastructure out there. And when you run the ma-math at our deal, that was a home run. Well, they got up and running and then we had the nuclear disaster over in Japan and everybody run from nuclear like you'd been burnt with fire. And so today that looks like a bad deal. I'm here to tell you, we built that station cheap enough. We'll never be upside down. The station we sold down there to the city, we doubled our money. So did we make some things, should we have done things different? It's pretty easy to drive from the backseat after the wreck. We're driving from the front seat and it's foggy. So we're going to do our best to go in a direction that makes sense.
Can I myself ask a follow-up question on that? It's just go, and it's actually the, the fundamental question is why did the city want to take over it? Okay. That, and then my, my follow-up question is that, what, you know, exactly, why did they want to do this and take it over? And then my, based on your response, I would ask Mr. Dominic, what his response would be is would the, he concur with the city trying to take over the district?
It was Idaho Falls. Idaho Falls, when we went to them for that joint agreement, we helped them and they helped us. They come back and said, no, we'll just take you over. I was immediately like, no, we have no interest in that, but we got pushed pretty hard to consider to go to that. Um, I think there's two reasons and I'm probably saying too much. I'm not a very good politician. We got seven and a half million dollars in the bank that we have taken care of your money and put away for a rainy day. Part of that is the money we got out of the station we sold. Part of it is because we don't spend money on everything that comes along. We're careful with your money and we would like to continue to be that way. We have built very nice stations. We would like to build, like I said, we'd already have a new one down by the golf course if we hadn't got outrun. I'm not sure all what went on there, but I think that the city is looking at our seven and a half million dollars that's in the bank and all of our wildlands equipment. We got a set of wildland equipment that we got for free from the federal government and it fixed up. It is second to none that we've put together. We get invited to fires all the way from Southern California clear into the Midwest. They call us and we, we take as much of that as we can do. With our new alignment, we will be able to do more because now we have a backup chief that loves that and understands it. We, it looks like already since we started the new budget, budget, we've got 400,000 in money from fighting federal fires. And by the time the year is over, where it's projected to be 800,000. So we've, we've made good money.
Okay. Jared, what, uh, I'll just summarize what I'm saying. And I do have the prerogative thrown in my two bits, I guess. Sounds like a power grab and whatnot. So Jared, what, what are your thoughts on this whole thing? And do you support what the city was trying to do?
Well, I don't have all the, I don't have all the details on it, but, uh, I do know that, uh, the city provides EMS services to the county. Um, and I know that there's, uh, agreements between the county and the city for support. Beyond that, um, I don't know anything about, you know, them, the city wanting to take over county operations. I haven't heard that from anybody. So, and I certainly can't speak to it at this point, but I will learn more about it when I'm elected. That's for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I was, uh, just sitting there wondering why, uh, Jared, why your wife isn't up there? I was just sitting there wondering why Jared, why your wife isn't up there talking as well? And so I'd like to hear her, her views and ideas on all this stuff that we've been talking about. So could you?
Absolutely. My wife was here at the previous forum with all the C2 candidates. And she did present then. This evening at the Celt, they're having another meeting and I suspect that's where the gyms are and whatnot. So that's why she's not here is because she's at the Celt representing.
What is the Celt?
Above it, I guess they have a, a meeting. So they're having a candidate forum at the Celt, which is a restaurant in Idaho Falls. And so they, they had set that forum up and it conflicted and I had made a commitment to be here. And so that's why I'm here and, and that's why she is there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is to the fire commission candidates or more maybe towards Doug. Is that I think this is new to us. Hey, we can elect a fire commissioner and now there's five of them so that we can kind of do that. Doug, your stand-up for Idaho brings in this information to the community and I would like whether one of you gets elected to have Doug bring you in and kind of go through the whole scenario of funding and equipment and the rest of that organizational. Who's there, who's, who, who, who do, who's employed, who's part-time, who's whatever from that standpoint? So Doug, if I, I'd like to challenge you to do that.
Oh, I'd absolutely do that. I think that's, we definitely will. And I guess my commitment would, my request would be is if either one of you did, either one, you know, one of you is going to win this, will you come back and, and tell us what's going on and answer the hard questions? And what we'll do is we'll drill you in. That's what we're here for. And so do I get a commitment that you would both do that?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We will do that. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Any other, another question?
So this is, goes to our city council individual, candidate from that standpoint. There have been two nationally sort of funded or, or not funded, but two nationally driven programs. One under the previous president and one under the current president. And I'd like to see how you would respond as a city council member. The first one was the, the, the COVID vaccines and the mask mandates. And the second one is the, the understanding of how ICE, the immigration controls. And so how do you respond to both that as a city council member to manage the situation within the city from that standpoint?
I, I, I don't believe in mask mandates. I don't believe in any kind of mandate. I don't believe in shot mandates. I personally did not receive the COVID shot. And we made a conscious decision even under extreme pressure and threat of losing our job to get it. We decided that we were not going to do that and we would follow through with that. So I don't support mandates of any sort with respect to COVID or, you know, masks or anything like that. With respect to ICE, you know, I fully support the federal movement and would support any, you know, legal activities that go on. So I a hundred percent support what's going on.
Well, I wish the other people were here because I'd like to know their answers, but I know that the mayor suggests people and the city council votes on the library board. So I just wondered, what is your take on the library? Are you for making pornography available, keeping it hidden, not having it at all? What's your take there?
Well, we need to protect our children. I mean, let's be realistic in, in my mind. I, I'm a man of faith, so my beliefs are in that direction. And so I don't think that should be provided. We need to have libraries. We need to have access to it. You know, whether there's an adult that is interested in that material and it could be made available to them. You know, as an adult, I, you know, I don't know. I haven't pondered that question, but certainly it should not be a just general public access for, you know, children and minors to have access to.
So my questions for you, Jared, are maybe a challenge for you. I don't really have a problem with rental property. What I have a problem with is the size and scale of what we're doing. Prior to World War Two, we used to mix small apartment complexes and with single-family homes. So if you go in the numbered street sections of Idaho Falls or down off Elm Street, you'll see light commercial buildings that are residual from those days and smaller apartment complexes. And that helped the community because we're all broke when we're young. And then we can move into another neighborhood. If we put these giant ones, we're concentrating all of the poverty in one area and that's where the crime is going to be. How would you address that?
Yep. No, that's a good question. We live down on Fifth Street, so I'm familiar with the, the different buildings you're talking about. We, there's, there should be a balance. We need to have a balance of housing opportunities. With respect to the large multi-unit things, city council recently approved the removal of limits on the number of units in the R2 zone. So that's what's helped facilitate these larger buildings. Historically, our city code did not allow those or they had to go through a conditional use process. But city council again has alleviated all those codes to facilitate this growth. And they're trying to maximize density to be in line with Imagine IF, which I do not agree with. I think it's, it's robbing our town of its character and we're going to end up in a sea of apartment buildings here shortly. Not that we're not already drowning. We do need to have some rentals and I think, you know, townhomes, it gets down to ratio. Historically since 79, on our, on our table, on our graph out there, since 79 up to about 2001, the ratio of apartment buildings, which are three plus units, three to 20 plus units. And single-family homes and townhomes was about the same. It fluctuated some years. We built more apartments. Sometimes we built more residences and townhomes. But in 2021, that ratio is completely out of whack. Out of 6,000 apartment buildings in Idaho Falls as the end of 2024. Forty-three percent of them were built between 21 and 24. So almost half the apartment buildings in the city were built in the last five years. And, and that number is still going to go up. And the, the regular residences and townhomes have not kept up. And, and so that ratio is way out of whack as to what it's ever been. So we would, we would focus on having all types of housing available and reducing the size of those.
So I'm not sure how other city councils work, but ours, if you want to talk to them, you have to send in an agenda. And then you're allowed three minutes to present that agenda. And I don't know if other cities are that way or is it just Idaho Falls? And if it is, what are you going to do to change it?
Absolutely. I can't speak to how other cities operate. I, I experienced this myself at different council meetings. And when I tried to get into city council meetings, especially during the COVID era, you know, it was, the response I got was, well, you have to get on the agenda and, but the only way you could get on the agenda was if you had something nice to say. That's basically what they said to me. So I was like, okay. So in response directly to your question, it needs to be opened up. We need to have open forums. We need to have open communications. And, and city council and the mayor need to be held accountable to the citizens that they're supposed to be representing, you know? So any citizen you should, I should be willing to talk to anybody that comes up and talks to me and I, I am willing to do that. And I think that, you know, hopefully that model will be taken on by the rest of the city council. And if there's enough of a referendum here on this vote and there is a big turnover of the incumbents, then that'll be a wake-up call for the rest of the people on city council that the people want something different than what they're getting right now.
Geez, I'm still small. Sorry, five feet tall. I wanted to say thank you for coming out at short notice. We appreciate you being here. I have several questions, but one of them is for you and the rest is for you too. So for you, Mr. Dominic, if you do get elected, will you, what will you do to help our first responders? Including police, EMS, firefighters, how will you work with the mayor and even these guys if one of them gets elected?
Well, I've been, I intend to support, fully support our first responders, all of them. Police, fire department, EMS, everybody. And I want to work with all the, well, we've already met with all the chiefs and all the city leaders. So we'll continue to work with them to see what they determine is best and work on that path forward. I know some issues that have, that are ongoing right now is the community policing effort that was initiated previously, which is very good, incorporating the beat system in, into the, into the city so that the police officers are directly in communication with the citizens. I think that's very good. I think there's work to be done still to, to build the rapport between the police and the citizens. And I, I want to work towards that. So I mean, I want to make sure that they have what they need to provide adequate service to the city and do whatever we can to enhance the level of that service. And we do have agreements with the county as far as firefighting and we do provide EMS services to the county. And, and that's all, you know, that money comes back into the city. So we're not paying for it. It's reimbursed to us. So I definitely want to work on enhancing those agreements and work on, I know there's some, some equipment issues and communication issues related between IF, the Idaho Falls Fire Department and the, the county fire department. But we need to do some work so that we can have a better integrated system and respond better to meet the needs of the public.
Thank you. Well, he, he partially mentioned that. I'm fully aware that there is a shortage of funding for equipment for the firefighters. And I want to know what you would do if you were elected to help with budgeting, to make sure that they get the equipment that they need. And maybe even help boost morale, please.
I don't know that there's actually, according to Ralph, it doesn't sound like there's a budget shortage for fire equipment or even maybe a shortage of equipment. What we need, I believe, is more Bonneville County fire stations and to man them with the county people. And let the city take care of all these stuff that they're doing and let the county take care of itself as well.
That was one thing I and some of the other commissioners have talked about. We have farmed out the ability for the city to answer fire calls in the county. We're, we have talked about taking some of it, if not all of it back. And in fact, that was run by somebody the other day at one of the meetings that we could do that. But when you make those big changes, it requires setup of fire station, additional people. So it's not something that can just happen overnight. I would be in favor of it. I, it would not, fact is I would look forward to it. I've been saying that for several years. But it would be a challenge to get it done in short order. I think we can do it. We have got the money. Right now we're bringing in about 4.2 million. And we're giving the city of Idaho Falls just under 2 million to drive our trucks. We provide the trucks and then we give them that money to drive them. And then we're paying our guys a little over, we're paying them 2.3 million at, at, down at Ammon to provide the rest of it. So we, right now we're spending just under 4.3 million to provide fire safety. I think we can do better if we just put our mind to it.
Thank you.
I'm a little more than five feet tall. Sorry. To Mr. Dominic, we live in the community because we, we appreciate our, our lives in the community because of the character that the small-town rural environment provides. We don't want to see it turn into something like what you see along the 15 freeway in Utah or over in Boise. One of our concerns is how much of the growth that we're seeing with, especially with this high-density housing is funded from out of state. We really like the idea of Idaho investing in itself rather than being at the mercy of outside investors.
I agree. I mean, I think that, that we should be focused on taking care of our citizens and our, our business owners and we should be trying to focus on making our community strong through supporting them. I know that a large, some portion of the funding, a good portion of the buildings are subsidized housing. Some of that's federally subsidized, some of it's state subsidized. And, you know, that brings in the whole concerns of, you know, certainly we need some level of subsidized housing in Idaho Falls, but we don't need to overbuild that in my opinion, because then what we're doing is we're doing the Field of Dreams things where we're going to build it and they're going to come. If we build, you know, 10,000 apartments for subsidized housing, then we're going to get everybody in the state that's eligible for it moving here. And that probably wouldn't be the best for our community or for our ability to enforce the law for that matter.
Do you have any idea what the residency rate is in those apartments? Is anybody telling us what the vacancy rate is?
That is, I think usually protected by the owners of the apartment buildings. But, you know, you can just do a Zillow search and you can probably find five to 700 apartments available for rent within the city of Idaho Falls right now. So there's, and every one of them has for rent signs on them. So clearly they're not full. And, but, you know, going back to how many apartments were built versus the population, the actual population growth, which is about 1,150 people a year. We built, and the average size according to the, the handout from the city, the average household size is 2.66 people per household. So if that rate is true and based on the number of permits that were pulled just from 21 to 24, we built about four and a half to five times more housings than we have families that are moving here. So I'll, I'll let you do the math on that one. I don't see, I don't see how we can possibly fill them all.
I'll just lean down. Thanks Doug. The high-density housing issue or phenomenon is just not unique to Idaho Falls. It's happening throughout this entire country. Basically from 2020 and accelerating in 2021 to this present day. So again, it's just not a revolution of Idaho Falls. There's something behind that. I think Doug knows what this is. But anyways, it's, it's bigger than just Idaho Falls. And the idea is, is how did all these people get taken over by this phenomenon? And so as far as a fight goes, it's going to be a pretty big fight for you because it's really, it's, 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 it's very large organizations that are pushing this. The same people that are pushing all these revolutions and like the, the no kings movement, there's, there's big money behind that. And they're trying to take over all of our small-town communities in this entire country. And Idaho Falls is just a symptom of that. So it's just not a, a small-town thing. And so how would you actually try to address that?
Yep. No, that's a very good question and I agree. It is kind of nationwide. And I think it is probably instigated at a national level and then rolled down to us. Within Idaho, we are required to have a comprehensive plan, which Imagine IF is. It does, there is no specific, there are 17, I believe, elements that are required to be addressed. But how they're addressed within that plan is open to local municipalities to decide. As well as the city ordinances, which the local municipalities can decide. All of those are chosen by city council. So the city council we have now approved Imagine IF. They approved all the zoning changes to facilitate Imagine IF, which created the high-density housing. So that can be reversed at the city council level within this community. If the city council members are replaced and there's a push to redraft Imagine IF and roll back all the loosening of the zoning, the zoning ordinances that are, that have been in place, then that can be reversed. Another factor is that everybody should be aware of, and I'm not sure that, you know, unless you, you know, read the city ordinances, you wouldn't know. But they're incorporating all the international codes within our city ordinances. So they're adopting international codes on almost everything. And that can be repealed too, but you have to have a city council that's aware and is actively fighting to address that.
The International Bidding Code, the ISS, they're all controlled by the UN, WF, big money, big power, stuff like that. So next, next topic is the police. WF, big money, big power, stuff like that. But, so next, next topic is the police. Getting a lot of just lip service from the mayor candidates, the city council candidates, we all support the police. But for a fact, there is an issue with actually supporting the people of this, this city. For four years, we lived next to a drug dealer in a very good part of town. For four years, they did nothing. For four years, we had people running through our neighborhoods with guns, sometimes 50 cars, 100 cars a day. We talked to the police, the mayor, everybody, no one did anything. That has got to change. Several neighbors, you know, threatened to move out because the police would do nothing. And this is just, just recently. Finally, the person moved out on its own. But, you know, I must not see the support that you're talking about with police.
I, I can't address a specific issue. I know the experiences that we've had, like I said, we live down on Fifth Street and we've had incidents in our neighborhood, I guess you would say. And, and we have had issues and, and sometimes they've been addressed. My understanding is that the police, from talking with the police chief, is that a lot of, they are aware of a lot of these things, but then they have to monitor it for whatever reason to, you know, build a case, or I don't know exactly the ins and outs. But it seems like they're aware of quite a bit of it, why they're not taking specific actions in a certain case. I, I can't address that. But I, I'm sure that, I would hope the police chief could, could explain that to us.
Yeah, unfortunately, if it was a cop show, nobody would watch this. Anyways, thanks.
But yeah, also along those lines, I mean, I think we are understaffed. You know, the crime rates have been going up significantly and there's only, you know, the potential for two or three more sworn officers within the next year or two. It takes quite a bit to train them and, and to become a sworn officer. And it is pretty expensive. And there is retention issues also. So I think there are things we could do to bolster that and hopefully improve response times and responsiveness as well.
So I'm assuming on the Bonneville County Fire District that they're manned, all the buildings are manned 24/7. And if they are, then wouldn't it be beneficial for the commission to take back over and staff it with their own people and have a little more control over it?
I think it would. I don't know why they're not staffing them now. They have that station out on Ammon Road that the city staffs, it's got Bonneville County equipment in it. Bonneville County owns the station. I don't know why they're not running it themselves now.
Well, it's about, excuse me, it's about money. We only have so much money to spend and we have to figure out how to spend it as effectively as, as we can. Currently, under our contract with the city, they provide it, they provide fire response for us out of those stations. And now that we have Ammon under our control, we've been able to expand there. We went from one full-time fireman, I think we got 17 there now, and I think we got close to 30 part-time guys. So we've came a lot of, long ways. We would like to continue to do that. Like I said earlier, we've got a little problem with housing. There's not enough room in the Ammon station to go much further. So we, we really should have built the new station down by the golf course. We would have had that done, but we got run over a little bit. I'm going to, I said we, I and the other commissioner got run over. It should have been built. We had the money. It was rocking and rolling and we're not there.
The other thing is, it's just like Jared said, training the police, it takes a while to train firefighters and paramedics also. So that's another thing that's going to have to come along with a new station.
I got it, I think, unless I drop it. Maybe, I'll hold it. Okay. Another question for the fire guys. So we'd like to know if the city has the ability and the equipment and the training to put out these three-story apartments and all that. Do they have, do they have the training and the ability to, if a fire broke out in one of these apartment buildings, can they get to that and take care of it without people dying?
Well, we would certainly hope so now, wouldn't we? They do have ladder trucks. Ammon has a ladder truck. Idaho Falls has two ladder trucks. Ammon does have 17 full-time employees, plus all their on-call people, plus we have UConn for the volunteer fire department. And the city has 165, 145 full-time employees. So I would think that with the fire suppression systems that are mandated in those buildings and the equipment that they have, that they would be able to take care of them.
I know I'm on the other side of the question asking, but I actually have a question if I could ask the, the commissioners. I had heard, and this is hearsay, I don't know how factual it is, but you might know, that like at Orchard Park and some of these new facilities that are equipped with the solar panels, that there's substantial battery backup storage that's going in the basement or in different locations within those facilities that certainly present firefighting concerns. And I don't, I don't know if it's actual fact or not, but I'd like to pose a question to you guys. Is that actually happening and how would we handle that if it was?
I don't know whether that's true or not. I do know that there's pretty stringent codes and the Bonneville County guy that approves all them plans is under pretty strict orders to follow the rules. I, I can't speak to it exactly, but I do know that Steve Sear used to be the one, and there's a new fella now that's in charge. I think, is, could there be a disaster? There always can be a disaster, but I hope that we're ahead of that curve on it.
Whoa, sorry. For the fire commission candidates, it sounds like with some new agreement that you've referenced, that Ammon might be on the same level as the rest of the county fire stations in proximity response. Can you comment on that?
Sir, are you asking about timing?
Yes, time to fire.
We, we can respond within the city of Ammon as fast as the city of Idaho Falls. And in some cases lately, we've been exceeding them. We will continue to try to do better and better as we get more firemen and if we can get another station. We're looking to try to build a station out 21st Street, clear out. We've been looking at property. We have not been able to acquire any. So if we could get one out there, we, we can do better. It's just a matter of kind of getting our arms around all of it.
Follow-up, follow-up question, specifically that area, 21st Street and eastward of there, outside of Ammon in the county. Ammon would be closer in many cases than the other county fire stations. Any comment on that? Is that, is it now the case where Ammon could be the primary response?
Well, the way it is currently, it's the city of Idaho Falls driving our truck that responds there. But if we can get a station put in there, we will try to do, we will do it with our own people. This, this is going to be a pretty big task to get this all done.
Long-term.
Yeah. I, I think we can be there in two years, if, but we got to have support from the people to get that done.
All right. Thank you all for being here and kudos to Jared for sticking to your commitment here when they tried to sabotage. That's just, thank you. But for the fire chiefs, tell me, so, you know, it sounds like both of you have had a lot of experience in there. But tell me, John, why you instead of Ralph? Tell me, Ralph, why you instead of John?
I think Ralph's been in there for a long time and it's time for some new ideas and some new blood. Ralph has, has pointed in the right direction. But I would like to help with this problem or this upcoming, they've got a bunch of different options, as I understand it. And the city of Idaho Falls seems to want to take over Bonneville County Fire Department. I don't think that's the right direction to go. But there are a lot of people that do think that's the right direction to go. So, I don't know. Ralph and I both worked and lived in Idaho Falls for a long time. And I just, I just really, I want to do it. I'm excited about it. You know, I've never done anything like this before. I was asked by some fire guys to run for this position. And I don't know, I think it's challenging and I'm going to learn a ton. I think I'm going to learn more. If I get this position, I'm going to learn more in six months than I have in the last three years.
Well, I've been here a long time. Those columns, they're new now underneath the freeway overpass right up there on West Broadway on 20, leaving town. I remembered when they started pouring the footings and putting them in. That's how long I've been here. I think we need to make some changes. I'm not opposed to that. Like I said, we'd had new fire stations, we'd had some more going. But we've, we've run into some people that want to merge. It appeared on the surface, they wanted to merge with the city of Idaho Falls. I'm very much opposed to that. That's not where I want to go. I think our firefighters in Ammon do a hell of a job. I'd like to see them get more and do more.
Okay, can I follow up with that? John said he has some ideas. What ideas do you have that are different than what Ralph has?
Actually, I think Ralph and I are pretty much on the same plane, our, our ideas on getting more fire stations, more firefighters, and continuing with the Bonneville County thing. But I don't know. I, I just need to learn more about it so I could really define what I want to do.
I'm really quite disappointed that the gyms didn't show up because I had some questions for them. So I'm not sure, Jared, if you're going to be able to answer this. So it might be a little bit more of a challenge for you. Along the lines of transparency, I've been trying to figure out why the city thinks it's a great idea to spend between 80 and 120 million dollars to meter water. And I've been trying to find those answers and I haven't been able to do, get where I want to get in learning about it. They all want to say, well, it's a law. When I ask if it's federal or state, I've heard it's state, I've heard it's federal. All I can find so far is NI DAPA from DEQ that states that they need a shut-off valve, possibly a lockable one. So if you have any information on that or what your thoughts are on it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, in, in 2015, there was a report put out that it would cost 87 million dollars to put water meters in all the homes in Idaho Falls. That equates to about 3,500, a household, 3,500 per household to do the meter installation. That was a 2015 report. So I don't imagine it's cheaper. In about, I, I believe it was 87, the state started requiring that the meter hookup be available in new construction. So that new construction since then has the ability just to plot the meter in, whereas anything before that, they're, they're going to have to go through and dig up all the lines and redo every single house because that is what would be required to put it in. So, you know, doing some research, across all of Idaho, less than 2% of the water consumed is used by all the municipalities and all the residents and all the private wells. That uses less than 2% of the water in the state because we're a big ag state. So we, you know, that's where all the water goes. So really what it equates to in my mind is spending a hundred dollars to save a dime when it comes to putting on meters. I mean, we're, we're going to spend a fortune doing it and it's really about control. They want, I had, I won't disclose who it was, but I had people that we had talked to when we were meeting with all the directors that said they feel the only way to curtail usage is for, to hit people in their wallets, basically. And so they want to control the water meter usage so that they can curtail your use of the water. And by the way, they're going to charge you for it too. I mean, look at Ammon as a good example that now has meters and they're all paying a fortune for their, their usage. So I don't agree with meters. And I think I'm, I'm more pro-education than regulation. So I think most people know that we live in a semi-arid state and that we should be conserving water. So most people don't just abuse that. And so if you educate people as to ways they can do it effectively themselves, they'll, they'll do that versus regulating it.
I'm going to ask a, a quick question while, while I have a chance. Just out of inner, in curiosity, I guess. Ralph, in, in the beginning, when we first started talking, you said, I think you used that the city offered, I think you used the word out, an outrageous amount of money for some land that the county had that you were going, and so you ended up selling it and it's going and building a, you know, buying some property over by the golf course, whatever. My curiosity, how much was that, what was that amount that was offered? That, I mean, it was too good to pass up, obviously.
1.57 million.
1.57 million. And what was the assessed value of the property?
We, we paid 750,000 for it to build the station.
You say that, would you repeat that?
Yes. We spent 750,000 to buy the ground and build the station and everything that was there. And when they come to us with that much money, we had purchased that other property because we wanted to go further east. We just took their money.
Okay. Now my follow-up here. Okay. It seems like it was a good profit to the, to the county with the, Jared, would, is that a good thing for the city to do?
I wasn't involved in that. So I, I can't really judge whether that was a good thing or not, not having any inside information. But certainly if those types of decisions come up in the future, I'll want to dig into it and make sure it's the best thing for Idaho Falls.
Okay.
I, I was told that that was COVID money that was thrown around. Don't know, don't have the facts to it, but that's what I was told. It was COVID money.
So spending COVID money that had strings attached to it. Understand. Okay, thank you. Next question.
I have a question both for Dominic and for Doug. I listened and watched the Compass Academy. I was pretty appalled at some of the answers that were given by the county commissioners, or not county commissioners, but the, the council, city council members. Pretty upsetting. But do you know if that was recorded? I mean, you're on Rumble. We can go out and watch that anytime. But was Compass Academy recorded? Were you told it was recorded?
Yes.
Can we go out and look at it?
Yes, it was recorded. I believe it was Channel 8.
Actually, I think it was East Idaho News.
East Idaho News, okay. I'm a mistake.
East Idaho News, I think, was a cosponsor for part of that. And so you should be able to do a search somehow. I don't know where that is, but you should be able to do a search.
You wouldn't want to post the link to it on, and send it out to, not on Rumble, but I mean, send an email out?
You go find, you go find me the link and send it to me and I'll try to send it.
I did look it up myself. So it is available on the East Idaho News website. And I recommend everybody watch it.
Yeah. How many people here watched it? Yeah. It was well worth it. And people, if you, if you can, you need to go watch because it's important.
I, I would encourage everybody to, to watch or attend as many forums as you can, whether it be here, whether it be at the city club, whether it be whatever. Because the whole intent here really is for you to become informed voters. And again, the thing that we do different here is we'll let you answer, ask the questions because, and we like you to be here to do that. Because when she asks the questions, you all get to hear it, you all get to do it. I can come up with a set of questions, but that set of questions is never going to be as good as what you will come up with. So anyway, check out East Idaho News and you'll get the rest of it.
Well, that was pressure for a good question. This is to John Taylor. So you sat there and you just want to learn. You have so much to learn and Ralph is so old. So my point is, my point is, so there is a lot to learn and Ralph does know a lot. How willing are you, if push comes to shove, would you sell, would you marry with the city? Because I don't, I don't think that's a good thing.
I'd have to know a lot more than I know right now to answer that question, but I'm not in favor of marrying with the city.
I, I have a question. And that's because I actually got a call tonight, just when I got in the parking lot. And it was about Ammon marrying with the city. It is usually the term that you have. And that there, I think, is an opportunity for Ammon to join the City Fire District or whatever they are like that. And I guess my question for both of you, because if, right now, Ammon is with the county, correct? So if they were to join the city, that would take them out of the county, correct? So it would be, it would, so the county part would, they would, Ammon would not be associated with the county anymore?
It's my understanding. It's my understanding that there would still be Bonneville County Fire Commissioners and we would still have some control of the money, but we'd basically turn it all over to the city of Idaho Falls to provide fire service. And I can tell you right now, if that happens, I, I probably won't be here because I have no point in being, uh, city of Idaho Falls patsy and that's what that would be.
Okay. Next question. Yeah, go ahead.
You know, it, it's kind of like, I, I went out and talked to some people the other day and they said in Iona, they put in a burn ban so they couldn't burn their garbage. So then they had to provide garbage service from somebody and then they were locked into this garbage service. And then they raised the rates and raised the rates and raised the rates. And that's how I kind of see if Bonneville County was taken over or merged or whatever with the city, then the city does, does have, who's going to control how much they charge the county residents?
Years ago, I don't even remember the year, about the first or second year I was a fire commissioner. The idea surfaced that we ought to have a metro system. Down in the Salt Lake Valley, they had a metro system. So we invited all of those folks to come up. We rented the Shiloh, we put on a big forum, everybody come and they talked about it. And during that forum, I wrote Dick Fowler, who is our liaison officer, a note. And I said, what is the city's current rate of taxation? I knew what ours was. He left the room and come back and I looked at it and I said, we'd just as well go home because it is just like it is today. It's about two and a half times.
Okay, Mary?
I feel I need to reiterate something I had mentioned earlier. It's not a shortage of supplies. It's more of the shortage of budget. A little fire bird told me that there is need for new equipment because, and that it's difficult to get a grant for it and it would, what they need for all, what they need to replace the old equipment is over their $5,000 budget. I have no idea if that's yearly, monthly or whatever. What I'm asking is how would you be able to alleviate that and make sure that they can get the equipment brand new or sooner than waiting for a future problem to happen? That's what I'm going to ask.
Let me help you. In order to get a new fire truck today, it will take two years. If you order it now, it'll take two years. We've had standing orders for fire trucks for about six years. Soon as one comes, we order another one. In order to prevent us from getting behind, we, we have to do that. Now, in terms of what you're talking about, I'm not sure what it is you're asking me if it's for light equipment or what it is. So I can't honestly answer that. I can tell you, the big fire trucks, when I got on this, took this job, a new fire truck was about 175,000. Today, though, this last truck we just paid for here was 436,000.
I'm referring to more like hoses and clamps and medical equipment.
That, that's incorrect. If they need supplies, all the firemen need to do is talk to their chief and they'll be provided. We, we absolutely will not hesitate to supply the very best of equipment for our firemen. There is no question.
Thank you.
My question is, uh, for Jared Dominic. Um, I've grew up here in Idaho Falls and I've seen the growth. And one of the things that's come with it has been a lot of congestion on the roads and it's taking a lot of time to get around town. My question for you is, what plans or ideas do you have to help reduce the congestion? Would you be in favor of toll roads, maybe on Sunny Side or 17th?
Um, no, I wouldn't be in favor of toll roads. I think, uh, that the best way to alleviate congestion is to first stop building high density apartments in every nook and cranny of the city because with each one of those apartments comes one or two cars. And so we're, by increasing population density, we're directly affecting the number of cars on the road within the city. And there's several locations, uh, homes being one and another one that used to be four lanes. And they closed those down to three lanes to add a bike lane. Um, not that I have anything against bike lanes, but when you take a four lane road and you're restricted to two traffic lanes, you, you, you're at least cutting in half the volume of cars you can get through it. So I would go back and look at all those streets and say, okay, maybe we made a mistake, you know, narrowing those down and open those back up to four lanes to increase the flow, you know, so that the traffic can move more quickly through the city and thereby reduce the congestion. Um, and, and certainly open, you know, I think good ideas come from anywhere. So if anybody has any suggestions, my door is open literally to come tell me what you think and we'll try and figure it out and see if we can come up with some better ideas.
Just a minute. Someone here mentioned something about water meters, meters and what has to happen. Um, I sat on the Snake Overground Aquifer deal. I was involved in that fight, the fight first started over in Boise. We hired a law firm out of Boise to provide us. Um, and the first rattle out of the box, we spent over $2 million. It just got uglier and uglier. Then we switched down to the one in Pocatella. A lot of that regulation and what you're having be subjected to. A house is allowed .14 CFS of water. That's all you're allowed. Your garden hose running wide open is one, one inch of water. So they're trying to figure out how to make that law work with what people are using. So your house, you're allowed .14 CFS. A CFS is 50 inches of water. So in a ditch, if you've got 50 inches, that's one CFS. By, by state statute, a house, like if you have a house in the country, you're allowed .14 CFS. That's all you're allowed.
Per year. Okay, I'm gonna, I actually, Ralph, I appreciate that and, and you just got yourself in a little bit of trouble because we're going, Stand Up Rite is going to try to revive the water issue because there's a lot of stuff going on with water. And, and a lot of people think, okay, let's, no pun intended, but that's water under the bridge. That's, that's not true. There's a lot of stuff happening. So we're, we're going to work to try to get a seminar put together so that we can understand things like this, what it is. And it's more than just Ralph, okay? It's going to be a lot of people that we're going to try to pull together so that we understand as a community, as people, what, what the heck's going on with our water. So I appreciate that, Ralph, okay? Appreciate that. But that's not to tie tonight's topic.
Well, when we talk about water, there's about meters. That's why I went there. If you're going to have that fight, you better go down to Southern Idaho. There is an attorney firm down there that represents the water users and represents Idaho Power. It's the same one.
Yeah, we're, we're, we are actually quite aware of that. So anyway, thank you so much for that. You, you're in trouble now, so. We have your name.
That's not new for Ralph.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Anyway, uh, back to the water issue, just for a half a second, I want to make a statement is I think we're already being metered because we pay a monthly fee, plus we pay a fee for irrigation. But that doesn't go six months where we're irrigating our lawns. It goes year round. I think they're pocketing that money to use to put meters in. And from what I understand is they can't let one, uh, place of, to be metered and charged for, that has to umbrella the whole town before they can do that. So, but anyway, Jared, is, we've got 500 acres of parks. I mean, and, uh, anyway, they want to do more parks. Why don't we take that money and put it in and do like a water park? That's more, you know, more people can go to.
I, well, I think, uh, well, there's a couple of things that I, that I took away from that. One, uh, relative to, uh, water usage and, and, and yes, we're paying a different, uh, uh, elevated rate in the summer for irrigation to cover that. I think, uh, a lot of the metering efforts are actually underway. Um, and in a lot of the commercial facilities are actually currently metered. I don't believe any residential areas are at this point. And, and, and the real question, and the question that I would ask and I'm, I'm digging into is, you know, within the city, we have a lot of, uh, enterprise funded organizations, which means that they basically are self-sufficient and support themselves and, and make excess money beyond what they need perhaps that they can use, um, in the future. Um, water is one of them, um, sewers and other sanitations and other powers and other cables and other. So why, if the water is already making money, why do they need to increase the rates? That's a question I pose. And I, I believe that the metering is, it, it's, you know, like was expressed to me. It's a way for the city to hit you in the pocketbook to moderate your use of water, to control your use of water. And I, I don't agree with that approach personally. And I know there's arguments on both sides and I'm sure somebody's going to flame me on the internet today when I get home, but, uh, th- that's what I believe. And I, and I don't think that there's a need to meter residential uses within the city. I can see an argument for commercial uses or industrial uses, especially if they're using a lot of water. And then that is also a way for, you know, that, those industrial uses that use the bulk of the water to, you know, help offset the costs for the residents. I mean, it, not that I'm trying to transfer that cost, but we should be focusing on the residents first. And by taxing them and increasing the rates consistently, um, especially when they're backdoor metering you with it, you know, saving that money to put meters on you in the back door, you know, that, that's not appropriate.
Again, I wish the gyms were here because they'd probably have some, they'd probably have some answers, but I hear a lot about, it's okay. I'm okay on my tippy toes. The, I hear a lot about a need or a want or support, uh, for a community center. And I'm wondering what you think about that or what you've heard about that? Or who it is that's necessarily wanting or supporting it? And if it's, you know, taxpayer funded?
Well, I know that that has been espoused by one of the mayoral candidates and, uh, several of the current city council members. Um, I'm not o- opposed to a community center per se. But I'm not, I, I'm just, I question priorities and whether we should be spending the money there. And I do know that they talked about, um, partnerships to fund that, you know, like they did with the, with the remodel that took place. And so if there's a pathway to get community involvement or outside funding, you know, to pay for a good portion of it, that might be a good investment for the city. But if we're spending tax dollars there, that might be better spent somewhere else, then I don't think that that's a good idea, especially if we're expected to bear the whole cost of that.
Any other questions? Okay, well, no other questions. Uh, let's just give you a, give you a three minutes. How's that? To give us your, your best elevator speech, uh, of why you ought to be the one that we vote for.
Thank you.
And we'll start with, yeah, we'll start with Jared and then Ralph and then John.
Okay, um, well, I'll just say, uh, in a constitutional republic, the voters elect the representatives to enact their will. City government is the level of representation that's closest to the citizens of Idaho Falls, that being the mayor and the city council. Um, the city council has a lot of power. They can basically do anything they want within the confines of state and federal law. So choose wisely on who you're choosing for city council and make sure that their ideas align with yours. And I would say, you know, witness the rampant high density housing and the traffic problems. Um, and they were ushered in by the current city council. They were created. They, they have facilitated that growth. The reasoning behind it, I, I won't speculate, but they definitely made it happen. And it definitely could be reversed with the will of the city council, the majority of city council. So I think if the citizens of Idaho Falls want to create change, they got to get out and vote. There's been historically pretty pathetic turnout for, um, local elections. And, and why, I'm not quite sure. I mean, I know everybody's engaged in their lives, but these elections most directly affect the citizens of Idaho Falls because they're setting rules and requirements that directly affect you on a day-to-day basis. So I would say, make sure that, uh, you know who you're voting for and that they're in line with what you want. And I personally would say, get all the incumbents out and, uh, get some new blood in there with some new ideas. And get back rooted in our traditional small town values again by supporting our families and local businesses and putting their needs first. It's time for a change, Idaho Falls. So vote Dominic.
Well, I really think that, uh, Bonneville County is a great place. And what I'd like to see the fire department, the Bonneville County Fire District, do is make it so that everybody in the county had equal coverage. Right now, there's a whole bunch of empty spots where the coverage, it takes a little longer. Ammon is winning one spot. They're trying to cover some stuff. Over on Ammon Lincoln, they're trying to cover some stuff. The city's trying to cover some stuff. I think we need to get Bonneville County together by itself, build another station, hire some more people and move up. There's a long time that Bonneville County Fire Department or Fire District has run very, very efficiently. And I think it's time for them to expand and have better coverage for all the patrons.
I won't disagree with, uh, John says, but I think we have to be very responsible to you as taxpayers on how we spend the money. I can tell you, our county once went broke providing fire service and we had to marry up with the city of Idaho Falls. That's where we got how we are. So when I got involved, we were just kind of getting on our feet. I think we need to go forward in that direction, but I think we need to do it with forethought and restraint. I don't think we want to waste your money. I think we can do that. I think we've demonstrated that. I would like to continue down that road.
All right, let's give them all a great big hand, you know, I, I'm gonna, you know, it takes quite a bit to put yourself out there, you know, to be able to do this and decide you want to represent the community and, and it's not easy getting up here to answer a question. I'm going to make a comment, another comment, you know. Stephanie did let us know why she wasn't going to be here. She was in Boise, didn't, wasn't going to make it back. Brandon doesn't like us. Okay, he doesn't like how we do things and all that. He thought, thinks it's a, you know, that we were not very civil in what we did during the mayoral race. Okay, uh, or the forum there. And okay, that's fine. So he didn't want to come. Uh, Mr. Skinner, he let me know too that, uh, you know, he had to work. He wanted to be here and he even wanted us to reschedule the, you know, the, the forum and whatnot, you know, because he had to work. However, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Francis never gave us any excuse. Uh, Jared said they may be over the cowl. Okay, maybe so, but at least they, they, I would have liked to have had the decency, if you will, of saying, we're sorry, we would like to, but we have prior commitments over to the cowl doing this. Neither one of them made any attempt to do that. Okay? You know, I encourage people to go back. We had the ma- the, the mayor forum, um, and it was, uh, October 1st. Go on rumble, look at it and you can check it out, okay? Uh, go to East Idaho News. Well, I think they had a mayor one too, and I, I don't, the city club had a mayor one. And then the, this, uh, city club had one on the, the council seat two. And that one, I think you can find on East Idaho News. I don't know where they are. Our city council's one, uh, for seat two was October 8th. You can go and find it on rumble or even on our YouTube. Go out, look, become familiar with the candidates. You really have to do that because they want your vote. You need to be aware and know who you're voting for. Now, some people don't like us. Don't like what Stand Up Rite does. Doesn't like, uh, doesn't think I'd allow you to come up and ask your questions. Okay? Me, I would like to almost have, and this is, you think, you think this is hard? I'd like to have head-to-head debates. I would like, would have liked to have had a head-to-head debate with, between Mr. Dominic and Mr. Francis. Okay, just the two of them sitting right here as a debate, as, as a true debate. You will never, you will likely never see that happen in this area. Because their people do not want to get up and have a debate. They do not want to be, I'll just put it this way, be exposed. Okay? But you know what, folks? You have to do that. You have to have your elected officials, they have to be accountable, accountable to you. They want you to check that box. want you to check that box. Okay. So for, if you're going to check that box for any of them, you need to know who they are. And I encourage you to be sure to do this. Look at all the forums and all that that are going on. Become educated so you know who you're voting for. Because if you don't, you have your own, you can only blame yourself. And you need to get your neighbors to know and all of this. And I'll say this, you know, if you like what we do, like what Stand Up Pride does, please support us. Because the more we do things like this, the more people don't like what we do and are fighting back against us. Okay. And so I ask you for your support. I truly do. Tell people about us. We, we meet here every Wednesday night. Okay. And we have done for quite a while. Join us on rumble. Watch us on rumble. Do, do this stuff. We don't charge for these things. Donate to our jar, you know, these don't come free. You know, it is, and it takes an effort. Come in person. You know, every time when you're sitting here, you'll, you'll lean over and talk to your neighbor or whatnot. And you start meeting people and finding out that, hey, maybe you think, maybe somebody else is out there that thinks a bit like you do. And maybe you are not alone. And maybe you are one of those that will actually be, create that tipping point, if you will. You know, after a certain point of things, that's where the domino effects happen. So I do encourage you to come and, and please support us. Get on these things like us and all that. We're here to inform you. That's our, our whole intent. We are, we are nonpartisan. We are not affiliated with Republican Party or Democrat Party, any party. We're nondenominational. This is not about whether you're Catholic, LDS, whatever. Okay. This is about, as I say, it's us kids trying to figure out what's going on and find out what the ruling truth is. And we're definitely a nonprofit. Okay. So we'd really appreciate your support. And with that, I'm going to say, come next week. I challenge you, everybody, to go look up the Balfour Declaration and do a little research on Israel, modern day Israel. Okay. And see what you can do. And come and prepare to ask Barbara some questions. Okay. Because I'll just say this, if you watch any of the national news and things that are going on and international stuff, our world is changing. And there's some certain players that are influencing that change. And they will affect us. I mean, it absolutely does. What happened in Washington DC and all that with COVID and whatnot affected every one of us. Okay. That's just a start. And we have to be aware. And so lastly, right now, for at least, you know, plan to come, keep track of us and all that. Buy a raffle ticket. It's a wonderful flag. Look at it. It's something to, you know, be proud of and all that. And it'll help us keep doing these things. So thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it. See you next week. Be safe going home. Thank you, gentlemen.